Good morning. If you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have minutes.
You'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June 27th?
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes. Okay, do we have any public comment regarding any pending resolutions? No, if not, we will move on. First up is Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
One resolution for consideration today, and that is amending a professional design service agreement with Jones &amp; Henry Engineers for the Boston Road Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes. Next up, we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one at Job &amp; Family Services and one at Solid Waste, one rate increase in sanitary, one promotion in sanitary, one return from leave from JFS, and one probationary removal at maintenance. The resignation has been rescinded, so that will be removed in the final resolution.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Discussion? That was a shorter one for you from late.
I know.
Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes, thank you so much. Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. For everything that Holly was short, I get to be long today.
Excellent.
Welcome to the Brett Show.
Nineteen resolutions. Wow.
For you guys. We will go through this as absolutely quickly as possible, because most of them are actually housekeeping stuff. First one is amending appropriations, so increasing budgets up to their certificates. Our second resolution for the day is transfer of appropriations. Our third resolution for the day is expense adjustments for various funds. Most of these fall under Drug Court and Adam. We just had to move some movements around for grant money, so that things hit the grants appropriately. Fourth resolution is the creation of a Drug Task Force fiscal year 2324. Drug Task Force has been awarded $935,000, and we have to go through and start doing the appropriations for that. You'll notice all the budgets are zero. That's simply because we have not had an opportunity to take that to budget commission yet with those amounts. Fifth resolution is a community corrections grant for adult probation for the fiscal years 24 and 25 for 1.818 million. Sixth resolution is the creation of the same type of grant for the Medina Municipal Court in the amount of 406,976. Our seventh resolution is what we call a TCAP grant, which is the Alternatives to Prison Grant, in the amount of 824,332 for adult probation. Again, this fund has to go to budget commission still, so we have our amounts at zero. We'll see those appropriations in the coming couple weeks. Eighth resolution is a creation of the Drug Task Force Ohio Drug Law Fund for the year. The amount for that grant is 92,429 from the state of Ohio, and it comes with 30,80985 of our matching funds, just so that you guys are aware. Ninth resolution is another Drug Task Force for the Recovery Grant Fund in the amount of 19,999.70. Tenth resolution is another Drug Task Force grant for the ARPA money from the state for fiscal year 2223. This actually got awarded as of December 31st '22, and we're kind of going through and getting this allocated now. The amount is 160,092.65. Our eleventh resolution is a grant for law enforcement recruitment for the sheriff's office in the amount of 30,875.85 for the period of two years from January beginning this year to December next. Twelfth resolution is the extradition transport reimbursement grant. So, the sheriff has requested $3,566.81 out of their costs for extradition of prisoners that the state will be reimbursing us for. Our thirteenth resolution is the Drug Law Enforcement Grant for the Drug Task Force. This one will be 92,429.55 with matching county funds of 30,809.85. Our fourteenth resolution is a second procurement card for Office of Older Adults. This is to aid them when they're dealing with the new café that they have opened up in Wadsworth. So, this way, we can kind of keep those expenses separate and clean. Our fifteenth resolution is the purchase of 6,600 gallons of gasoline from Ports Petroleum at $2.24 per gallon. Boy, it's nice to see those prices coming down again. Our sixteenth resolution is the transfer of inventory between different offices. Our seventeenth resolution is a declaration of excess property. Table A will list out all of the items that are being disposed of. Table B is items that will be going to auction. We're finally doing some updating on computers for the Board of Developmental Disabilities, so you'll see quite a few of those going out the door. Our eighteenth resolution is excess property of motor vehicles that are going to Enterprise Fleet Management. These will go and be auctioned, and we will receive the proceeds at a later date. And finally, the nineteenth resolution, so that I can go sit down, is the authorization, weekly authorization for our bills in the amount of 845,267.90. As always, these items are kept at the auditor's office for perusal.
I would move to approve the nineteen resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, a quick question, and this on the one regarding the regular unlet of gasoline. What do we do when you have two bidders that are exactly the same? I probably should ask this offline before this.
So, we have actually had this occurrence all of once in a very long, long time. When they are the same, we choose based off of a couple other factors of delivery speed and the routine amounts that they end up bidding lower than other competitors.
Okay.
So, if we have somebody that's coming through and gives us a better deal routinely, then we like to favor that relationship.
Okay, sure. No, makes sense. All right, thanks.
Okay.
Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes. Thank you so much, Brett. Next up, we have Debbie Calley from Job &amp; Family Services.
Just five resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from the JFS Children's Services 4E Fund to the JFS Public Assistance Fund. The next is the county auditor to transfer funds from the JFS Children's Services SCPA Fund back to the JFS Public Assistance Fund. The next is just authorizing a contract with Brian Media Strategies for Foster Awareness Targeted Marketing Solutions. The next is another contract with Brian Media Strategies, but this is for recruitment and retention of targeted marketing solutions for our workforce. And the next is authorizing a MOU with Alternative Paths. This is for our needs assessments for youth that are entering facility care.
Move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes. Thank you so much, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on department updates. First up is Denise Testa from Planning Services.
Good morning. Good morning. Okay, so I do have one resolution. We're not as busy as Finance. And it's a resolution to authorize the reallocation of funds between the administration and construction budget items of the Lafayette Township Critical Infrastructure Projects for our program year 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating?
Yes.
All right. So, that actually is a good segue into our next item for our update for Planning Commission. So, I am excited to share that we've received three concept plans for this month, one in Hinkley, one in Liverpool, and one in Montville Township. So, we're very excited to review those for our concept plan meeting, which is scheduled for July 19th. As you know, we had our Planning Commission meeting last night, and I sent that email update to you as well. In terms of our Community Development Block Grant projects, we are wrapping up the Critical Infrastructure section of the Main Drive in Chippewa Lake, so they should be installing the second layer on Main Drive and installing the first layer for the ARPA section of that project. The Montville Cobblestone Park pathway is complete. Lodi Playground was installed yesterday, so those were our two outstanding projects. The Wadsworth Housing Assistance Program, they're continuing to spend that funding down as well, and then we will wrap up our program year 2020 within the next couple of months. For the Lodi Critical Infrastructure, so this is the bridge replacement, the prosecutor is currently reviewing the contract and bid documents for that project. So, we are on schedule with that. For our 2022 CDBG projects, the Wadsworth Sidewalk, the bid was accepted, so that will, construction will begin soon. The Housing Assistance Program is continuing for program year 2022. The Lodi Pathway, the project, the documents are under review for the prosecutor. And the Financial Empowerment Center located just below the Honeybee Bakery is also in full swing, and they are seeing clients, and that is a free service to all of our communities in Medina County. We are continuing our Fair Housing Presentations. In fact, I will be presenting some Fair Housing Customized Training to Creative Housing in the next couple of weeks. I believe that's on July 20th. Other than that, are there any questions? All right, thank you very much. Have a great day.
Okay, as far as updates go, I'm, oh, Laura's standing up, sorry. I'm going to say Laura Toth. I was going to go out of order, but that's okay. Come on up, Laura.
Thank you. Good morning. On Tuesday, the Medina County Senior Adult Foundation hosted the 47th Annual Twin Sizzler, which is a race right here on the square, 5K, 10K, a one-mile fun run for families, and then a 27-mile bike race. It was a sizzling sizzler. It was very successful. We had over 1,000 participants in all the races, and the proceeds benefit the foundation, whose mission is, it is to serve the needs of seniors in the county through OOA. The biggest project we're taking on at the foundation is going to be the replacement and upgrade of our tables in the senior center. It'll go along really nicely with the, you know, kitchen, but we are looking into, if you imagine kind of a school cafeteria with the tables that pop and roll. They will not have seats. We have seats, but those kind of tables that are easily movable. To outfit the Medina Center with these tables is about $24,000, and the foundation is more than willing to take on that expense, so that's really exciting news. We're looking at different things. I wanted to update you on that. A little construction update, we had the kitchen walk-through on Thursday, the 29th. There were seven potential bidders that walked through and looked at the plans and at the kitchen layout, so we'll be excited to see which bids come in and where they land. Also, I was just meeting with the construction team right before this meeting at the Human Services Center. I believe that south entrance is just about done. I think it's going to come down in the next week, the fencing, and then they will start on the bridge over the span of the courtyard, the front entrance, if you will. We began distribution of the seniors' farmers' market nutrition coupons last Tuesday, 27th. We received 272 packets of $50 worth of farmers' market coupons. That's like 70 more than we've ever received. That's really exciting, and I'm hoping that's a reflection of the population growth of seniors in Medina County, that we're starting to see it through some of the programs at Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging. This program is really beneficial to the senior population and to the farmers who take part in the program, who are getting that reimbursement when a senior redeems their voucher. We still have about 70 packets, maybe a little less, to distribute to any senior age 60 and over that falls below 185% of the federal poverty level. This is the only program we administer that has any kind of financial qualification, that's one thing, and I believe it's because it's in cooperation with the USDA as well as the Older Americans Act. Finally, really good news, the Medina County Office for Older Adults Aging and Disability Resource Center, so this is our team of workers that do financial reviews, Medicare benefits, a lot of information and referral to seniors in the community, and actually, this program is for anyone age 18 and over with a disability. But they were surprised last week with a walk-in commendation from Columbus. Our center was recognized as a Team of the Year from the Ohio Senior Health Insurance Information Program, or OSHIP with P-O-S-H-I-P. OSHIP approves and trains our team members annually, and to ensure the correct and most up-to-date information is given to those inquiring about health insurance programs. I just want to congratulate Sean Parker, who's the supervisor of that program, and employees Mindy Baldwin, Diane Falte, and Tammy Dean. Thanks.
Very nice.
It's really nice, really nice surprise, so I'm proud of that team.
Now, we know why you're so eager to get up here for your.
Right.
Laura, hold it up, Brian's going to get a picture.
Oh, okay, great.
We have a picture coming of the team with it, but you go ahead.
We can do both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thanks. I will not be able to be here next month. I won't be, but I will be back in September, I'm sure with, it's going to be a busy couple months, so I'm sure with all kinds of updates. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we have a special guest here today, and we're hoping she'll come and give us a little update on what's going on in Columbus. We have State Representative Sharon Ray with us today.
Well, thank you very much. It's so nice to be here and looking at among the crowd, it seems like it's Old Home Week. I mean, you even got Chris Jacob back here. I don't know how that worked out, but, good lord, and I love seeing a woman as president of the board. Nothing against you guys. But you run a tight ship and a good meeting. Well, the state budget, what do you want to know? There's a little bit for everybody to love and a little bit for everybody to not love. So, lots of tax cuts in this budget, certainly some historic investments in not only the public education system, but universal vouchers. Couple of the things that I think will be really helpful to Medina County I wanted to mention specifically is funding for our Medina County Child Advocacy Center. This is something we push for really hard. It's a great, it's a great center to help kids that are experiencing trauma, they need special facilities to be interviewed, to be examined, to work on reunification. Medina County's program is top shelf, and thankfully, the President of the Senate came down to see it, so it made the sell job for the state budget a lot easier. Not only the Medina County Center got funded, but also the other centers around the state for their operating budget. Another interesting thing that was in there is we had a gal from Medina County reach out to our office, and she was inquiring about the handicap placards. She has an invisible disability, which apparently people can be very hostile if you, if they don't notice your disability when you're parking in a handicap spot. So, the state of Ohio will now be offering an orange placard, which will signify that your disability is an invisible one. And that was very important to her and a lot of other folks that are experiencing that kind of pushback. So, that was something else that was in the state budget. Also, significant investments in our career tech programs. You know, here in Medina County, and I know Steve Cullane and Aaron, you've all been very, very involved in the Medina County Career Center, which, by the way, turned away 200 kids this last year?
I believe.
From their programs?
It was 200, yeah.
Which signifies not only are more kids looking at that as an option, but also the great programs that are available out there. Wadsworth is experiencing some similar situations. $200 million in new facilities money was in the budget, as well as $100 million to buy new equipment for these facilities. I think that's going to be a real win-win for all of us. Also, $40 million for the Age in Home Grants, and as Laura eloquently spoke to, is an aging Medina County population. We want to keep people in their homes as long as we possibly can. This money will help do that. One other thing that I thought was really important to mention is this budget also is pushing up direct care worker salaries. You know, we forget with the inflation and now with fast food restaurants spending $18 to $20 an hour to keep people, we couldn't keep these people that do so much good. It's a difficult job. They have a lot of responsibility. So, this state budget will push up the starting, or the hourly wage, $17.24, $18.25, and that will require a little bit of a local match, but I think it's well worth the money. So, those are some of the highlights in the state budget. There will be more as things get detailed, digested, and sent out to the counties. Does anyone have any specific questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for your help, and I know it took a significant push for the healthy aging grants. The governor put it in, the House kept it in, and then the Senate took it out, and then, of course, that means you had to push back to be able to keep it in. And Laura Toth and I and Chris have already sat down. We are going to be taking advantage of that and actually working with the ROA Advisory Council to come up with a plan to best utilize that to help people age in place and be able to stay home. And that was, it was very important, because I know there was a push to, rather than the money coming to the commissioners, to go to the area agency groups, which, as you know, we get for every dollar they get, we get like 10 cents. So, at least now, we can get the full value and be able to utilize for our seniors. And I want to, I just want to publicly thank you for pushing for that.
Well, and I'd like to take a minute to thank you, Commissioner Hambley, former state rep Hambley, for always being on speed dial in my phone and frequently taking the call.
I did have one question about the vouchers. Like, approximately how many more kids are going to have access to that?
You know, it's basically a universal voucher system, but it's on a decreasing allocation. So, if you're up to 450% of the poverty limit, you will get, depending on the size of your family and your income, you will get a significant portion of it paid. After that, it drops off, and I think it actually levels off to about $1,500 per child per year. So, you will get some assistance, but for our larger income folks, they're not going to get what our, what our more moderate income folks will get.
Anything else?
Do we? Indigent defense thing.
Are we limited to budget questions? Because I do have one other question.
Yes, I'll try to answer that.
There was, and actually Debbie Calley was here, but there's been a proposal regarding the state employees and work from home. Do you have any indication of how that might go? Because that could be an impact for our JFS.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the Senate withdrew that provision where they wanted to force all the state workers back into the office, because from what I read in the paper, they released some of the leases, so there was no place for people to go back to.
Could have been an impact here as well.
Well, that was taken care of, thankfully.
Great.
Thankfully.
I was mentioning the indigent defense. Thank you for that as well.
Oh, right, great.
Try to at least get it, keep it up to the 90%. I know at one point in time, and the Senate version had dropped down, and there was the questions whether that was going to be.
Yes, we have a long history with indigent defense. So, yeah, I was glad we were able to get that up. But thank you so much for allowing me to stop by and say hello.
You're welcome any week.
Well, thank you. It's great seeing everyone. Thank you.
Okay, so we do not have any Commissioner resolutions. Do we have any public comment? No, we will move on to discussion session, and we are going to first do the EMA Heather Hedge renovation project. I don't know who wants to come up first, or...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Well, good morning. My name is Cleat Miller. I'm a project executive with Webber Murphy Fox Architects. So, in front of you, you have the rendering, which will be posted on the monitor. So, on the left-hand side of the screen and on the image in front of you is the existing EMA facility. We will be renovating that, and I'll show you shortly in some of the construction documents, some of the detailing of that. On the right-hand side of the screen is the new apparatus shed. It's a five-bay shed, approximately 72 feet wide by 60 feet, 65 feet deep. Thank you, next page. So, then we have the cover sheet, which is typical of most architectural projects, just listing all the associated engineers and the location of the facility. Next page. These are some more detailing. This is a life safety plan. Next page. Now, this is the site plan that gives you some orientation to how the facility is in relationship to Heather Hedge Drive. Heather Hedge Drive is on the north side of the existing facility. In this image, we are opening up one portion of the existing facility to add a new bay. That bay was closed in some time ago and landscaped to round it, so we're going to replace that and open up that bay for additional storage. On the lower right, or lower-left corner is the new apparatus shed in plan view, and so that shows you the five bays, and there will be trenches in each of the bays to collect any of the moisture that may come off the vehicles when they're returned to the shed. Next page, please. Some general notes. Next page, please. This starts to get into some of the detailing as they demolish some of the components of the interior of the existing space. Helps contractor recognize what things stay, what things go. So, in this case, on the left-hand side of the image, you're going to see some of the interior partitions. Currently, the Chippewa Lake Fire Station, as it was received by the EMA, has a large kitchen where they did some pancake breakfasts. Well, we're going to remove the kitchen, and we're going to revise and update some of the toilet rooms as well to provide newer facilities. Then, also doing some renovation to the ceilings, cleaning that up, new lighting throughout the existing bay in the back. That lighting will stay. It's all LED at the current time, so it's good, it's nice, energy efficient, and well-illuminated space. Next page, please. Again, some more details about during the construction, the new components. So, at the, on the left-hand side of the image, you'll see in the middle of the existing building, we're now creating a larger conference room, work area, some restrooms. We've redefined that third bay and starting to show more detailing for the contractors. Some of the existing windows and penetrations into the space are going to be closed up and covered with siding. Next page, please. And then, this is of the new apparatus shed, a little more detail. This will be a wood frame structure. It'll have a complete concrete floor. As I mentioned earlier, there's trenches in each of the bays, so the slab will taper to those for the drainage, and there'll be a concrete apron out front for the vehicles to roll up on. And then, there'll be some work and storage area around those vehicles. I know there's a, quite a complement of different scales of trailers and vehicles that they have on hand, and so we felt that this scale would allow them some flexibility to just, you know, place some of the vehicles as needed in whatever orientation they needed. And then, the other image on that same sheet is the reflected ceiling plan. We are going to have a metal roof, so it'll give us a lot of durability for several decades. Incorporated into the roof is a translucent panel system that matches the profile of the metal roof. This translucent panel system will allow some natural daylight to come in and also allow us to reduce the energy usage of the LED lights. Next page, please. And that's really just a roof plan, looking at it from above. Helps the contractors to understand the position of the translucent panels and this overall scale. Next page. And then, this is a building section, sort of gives the contractors a sense of what kind of space. As you can see on the right-hand side of that building section, the old Chippewa Fire Station has a slope structure, so we're trying to work with to still give them plenty of overhead space for the taller vehicles, but otherwise, we're not really... But otherwise, we're not really modifying that at all. And then in the top-left corner, that image shows the new door, the overhead door to match the existing, and then some other detailing. Next page, please. Elevations of the exist, of the new apparatus shed. So we have all four sides and a building section looking trans, transparently through the building. So up in the upper-left corner, you can see that it's a nice open space, clear floor plan, so lots of flexibility for their daily tasks. And then the structure will have a wood truss system, so that helps with the clear span throughout. Next page, please. Wall sections, typical of most construction, really gets into the detailing of how this building is, is put together. Next page, please. Detailing on the new construction in the existing space. Elevations, details of the restrooms, some of the work and conference space, kitchenette. Next page, please. Standard details that we include are all mounting heights to make sure that we're complying with any accessibility issues. Next page, please. Some millwork details. Next page, please. Roof details, want to make sure that all the connections between the trusses and the roof and the wall cladding is, is well defined. Next page, please. Schedules, interior finishes, exterior finishes, doors, windows, any fire rating of walls, we have to incorporate that as well. Next page, please. And we're back to the rendering. Are there any questions?
Yeah, one that I have, I know that attended the last EMA building, and you were going through the budget portion of it, trying to trim certain elements down. And I presume that this, this reflects those, those changes.
That's correct.
All right. And I was trying to, comparing this to the one that had been sent out in May, I guess Aaron had sent that out. One of the elements that was trimmed out from the budget was the parking lot, as well as, I guess, the drainage, the stormwater drainage portion of that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's, and I already talked to Chris Jacob about this, as well as mentioned to Mike, that I think as we ought to bid, we probably ought to include that as an added or an addendum. And that way, if we can come up with the money, the additional money necessary for it, then basically we can go ahead and proceed based upon that bid. It's one you don't have to add, but, and I think it makes some sense, depending on how the prices come, come through. And I, and that's one, it is a county building, and frankly, we try to make sure we've got parking lots people can drive through without hitting craters. And it's not a great drive pavement right now, so I think it, it's kind of making sure we've got that, as well as taking care of the drainage issues, stormwater, the MPDS permit.
Yeah, I wouldn't have cut the parking.
Yeah, erosion, all those kind of things. And given that's an area that's, we want to make sure that that, every opportunity, we can go ahead and make sure that it, likewise, if we can find the additional money for it, to be able to build it.
Good. Well, we'll incorporate it as a bid alternate.
That'd be great. That would be great.
Excellent.
Now, what were the other elements that were moved from that? Do you recall? I know we.
Interior painting was one. That was about $15,000, wasn't it?
Yes, we're all going to grab a brush and.
Well.
A little painting.
And then the waterproofing inside.
Waterproofing.
Waterproofing of.
Three items.
Yeah, there was interior fiberglass reinforced panel that we use to keep the space clean on the interior.
This is for the shed?
This is for the apparatus shed.
Okay, got it.
So it was about eight feet tall, but it went around all, all four sides, except for the, at the doors. But it was a reasonable amount of money to trim back, and it could be something that can be added in the future very easily. It's just a surface finish.
It's a surface finish. That's, so what will be the surface finish on the inside?
It will be the open cell spray-applied foam insulation. It's a, it's a very hard surface.
Oh, okay.
But it's not a finished surface.
Got it, got it.
And then you'll have your exposed wood framing of the, of the shed.
Okay, so basically it wouldn't be a finish without, without that. And that was just more like to protect it from, if you're going to wash or.
Yes.
Do anything in terms of.
Greasy work, wet work. It was really just to protect the, you know, the surface.
Okay, all right.
Any other thoughts?
So that, I just to be, I might have misunderstood this even at the, the EMA meeting. That, when you, that was all incorporated into the painting part, part of the scope of work?
There are different elements of the scopes of work. So the panels are separate from painting.
Okay.
And the site work is separate from those other two.
Okay. So the, the finish could be applied even if the painting were removed? Or does it have to get painted and then the finish get applied to it?
Well, these particular panels come pre-finished. There are, you often see these in a, in more of like a gas station scenario where you've got a cleanable surface or in a kitchen area. So this surface can actually be applied easily in the future.
Okay.
So we'll still have water hose bibs inside. We'll still have electrical outlets. They'll just be exposed, and then these panels can be added in the future as needed.
And the price of those panels again were?
It was the upside of $13,000.
Should we put that as an add-on?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You want to try that as an add-on too?
Does it hurt to add on if you can find the additional funding?
I would, yeah.
Can, yeah, I would like that as an add-on too.
We can incorporate that as a bid alternate as well.
Bid alternates?
Yeah.
I think so. Now, there was also, I know some emails and some discussion at the meeting regarding non-conforming use and some issues. Now, what exactly, I guess in terms of the, the local zoning and so forth that it doesn't comply with, but we've been able to work through the zoning officials regarding that? What was this?
So the, the situation of the current zoning, when it's applied to that whole area, which is a commercial district.
Right.
Really, it, it doesn't help anybody because rear setbacks are supposed to be about 50 feet. I don't think there's maybe a, all but one building there that has a 50-foot rear setback. Side yard, the existing building is about six or seven feet off the property line, so that really isn't in compliance.
Got it, okay.
We are in compliance on the west side with the new apparatus shed. We're more than 25 feet from the neighboring property line on the west, and we're 91 feet from the center of Heatherhedge Road. So we're just short of 100 feet there. So, you know, there's a couple elements, but we are going to add arboretis around the south and west perimeter, so that helps to soften the impact to the neighboring residents.
Put like some screening and so forth, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, not, no, that, I was just trying to understand because there wasn't much specifics as to what we were, in effect, I know we were making our best attempt, given it's a non-conforming use, and as you point out, it seems, yeah, pretty significant setbacks for commercial use.
Yeah. But it's more, it, it's an aesthetic issue, not a safety issue in terms of the positioning of the building on the property?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, the building is metal sided, you know, so that should help preserve it for a long time.
Sure.
And then also the, the setback for the front of the new apparatus shed really assists the EMA with moving some of their larger vehicles. So you might have trailers in excess of 35 feet plus a truck to drive it. So that, that total 65 feet is, is really necessary in order to, you know, keep Heatherhedge Road clear of vehicles.
Well, and I think doing the parking lot adds extra storage space for large vehicles when needed versus, you know, swampy, the potential swampy area that that current parking lot can become, so.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, but I think too, the sediment controls and all that that'll be in place will help. There's water quality issues, as you know, within Chippewa Lake, and everything you can do from getting off-site, making sure that you've got the appropriate erosion and sediment controls, especially when you've got vehicles and things coming on. It's good for us to be able to comply with that, and I think it's important for us to address that if we can.
So, or, go ahead.
I was just going to go back to the zoning real quick. So we don't anticipate, there won't be any need for any variances or anything like that to, to be.
It's our understanding that with the non-conforming pre-existing conditions, that we won't, are not going to be required for a variance.
Good.
So we are ready to gather.
Well, you have to put the bid documents.
With the two add-ons.
And, yeah, they'll be working with the prosecutor's office.
Yes, we are.
For that specifically.
That's on.
Now, what's, what's the process?
I'm just asking, you're okay with this and the two add-ons?
Oh, absolutely. No, I'm, I'm very, very pleased.
Listen to it.
Very pleased with the project, with the design looks like. I do want to, I think we ought to recognize Sharon Ray as well as.
Yes, Sharon.
Darryl Pick and Mark Roman for keeping this in the capital budget the last round. So we're able to have the sufficient $800,000 state capital money to have this built.
Definitely.
Very much needed.
Thank you.
So I.
And I guess that also goes to my other question, which is the, the timeline from the, from the bid process to, you know, do we have a, a target timeline or anything like that at this point or?
We are looking at getting it out to bid possibly in the next week. It'll be on bid for two to three weeks and then get approvals for those through the prosecutor's office, and we hope to break ground sometime in August.
Super.
Fantastic.
All right. Now, what's the process for going through the building department? I know I had sent an email asking that. I'm not sure procedure-wise, how's that work?
Well, the contractor upon award.
Would they would apply and, of course, get the review? Okay, all right. Got it, all right. Super.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
So, you know, just to note, the next step would be for you to approve the resolution on the actual bid process. We're going to present that to you.
Next week would be great.
Yes.
And then we can start getting the bid package? Yes.
Given this, this is Thursday, we hope by Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Great, thanks, Ed.
Thank you so much.
Great, great. Good job.
Okay. Steve, do you have anything?
Uh, we were going to do a Board of Elections lease, weren't we not?
Yeah, I thought Aaron was doing that one. That's why I was asking you.
Oh, okay.
Go for it, go for it.
Uh, go for it, me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, Board of Elections and Heather's here, so thank you Heather for, for sticking around. Their lease, I believe expires next year, early next year, and does have, as part of the original resolution we passed, which was Resolution 130903 back in, in October of 2013, the lease that was approved then included, includes a renewal term, an option to renew for either five years or 10 years. The statute 350110, and thanks to, to Mike Lyons, also Chris Jacob for, for running some of that information down, provides that any lease that the, the Board of Commissioners is required to review and approve for the Board of Elections shall not exceed 15 years. So with the 10 years we've already had, it seems appropriate. You know, they'd be able to authorize the five-year renewal without us taking any new formal action, but I just wanted to present.
I'd prefer the five-year anyway.
I'm just, fine, let's go.
I mean, we could have a lot of changes in the next 10 years, so I prefer the five-year.
Yeah, and that's, I, I thought that made sense too, just to keep, keep options open. But I just wanted to get everybody's.
Yep.
Kind of sign off on that. I don't, I think it's the interpretation of the prosecutor's office, and I guess also my thought that there's no need for a further resolution because it's already, that lease has already been approved with that five-year renewal term, so.
Is that true? We don't need to?
Technically, no.
Okay.
I give her a win with the prosecutor's office.
Okay.
Just one other now. Financially, the grant increases by $6,000 for the year, just by your option. So from a budgetary.
Okay. And Heather is here, I mean, as far as its adequacy for Board of Election purposes, I think it's the preference of the, of the board to, to remain there?
Correct. We'd like to remain there. Our board was asking, we just want to be on the same page as the commissioners. And just want to be on the same page and not go against your wishes.
But five years is good.
I think, I think it's a great location, and I'm not sure where we would put you if we, if you weren't there, so it's good for everybody.
Let's not say that too loud because we might be renegotiating that lease.
Right, right.
Well, it's five years.
I'm concerned with 10 years was we're growing and we're already using all the hall, the hall space.
Well, some of it, as I understand, is documented stories, so I think there's some issues, there's, there's ways to address that, reducing the need for space and growth and so, I guess those are important things to consider at this point. And I know you're going to have probably within the next year or two, new board members as well. So at this point, just allow the, the new blood to take a look and see long-term what the real needs spaces are, what the opportunities are for the Board of Elections, as well as changes at the state level as to how elections are conducted. I mean, we're getting letters all the time, people, they want everything to go to paper, back to paper ballots, and I can't imagine how we fit that in.
Yeah. And also, the five years gives us, you know, we're finishing up our courthouse project.
Yep.
Gives us time to make decisions on our future buildings and the direction we'll head, so.
I, I did want to bring out, if I could, if we switch.
Sure.
Okay. The Boston Road Interchange Study that was issued, and thank you, Aaron, for sharing that link.
Sure.
Haven't gone through the, was it, you said it was?
714 pages.
700 pages, so I got to go through that. But as I understand, the one item that the consultant that was hired to, he's done work for, they've done work for county for years, and they're, they're a responsible firm, but one of the, I guess they were instructed by Strongsville not to include as part of the study, the Howe Road and 82 intersection. And so it's hard for me to believe that that, that was, I understood the motivating factor for the study overall, and seems to be everybody's thinking that's why we need a Boston Road Interchange. If they didn't include that as part of the study, then they really haven't included one of the biggest elements that's causing the need for interchange. So I guess that's one of those areas I would hope that NOAACA, ODOT, Strongsville, Kauka County would take a look at and go, address that first and then, and then talk about an interchange. But I know that that's not the way the state law ended up working with transportation, but I think that that's one element's like, now, they really need to focus on that problem of Howe and 82.
And my understanding from my conversation with Grace at NOAACA, which I think I mentioned this at last week's meeting at some, at some level, but they, NOAACA would have its own studies that it would have to do anyway, and the report itself acknowledges that. I read that in, you know, that they basically said this is kind of step one in the process. But it was also at least intimated in that conversation that NOAACA may have the authority to order a new version of this initial study that's being done, because if, if it ultimately progresses to that point, they could, they may or may not accept this initial study that was prepared by Strongsville and kind of at Strongsville's direction as, as that stepping off point for the project, so.
But the intent too, because the way NOAACA structured, you have ODOT 3 and ODOT District 12, both districts, they only, so at that point, they would also help identify the, the scope of that study, what needs to, elements that have to be included.
Right.
As well as Medina County.
Right.
So at least, all, all the parties ought to be at the same table, helping to design the scope and, and the elements necessary to solve the issues that they're seeing.
Yeah, I mean, at, at a minimum, I mean, again, I think we, we all have our opinions about, you know, the next steps there and, and what we'd like to see. But at a minimum, if it does continue to progress, I think the, the one ask everybody needs to make is that, that it is being done in such a way that's designed to alleviate the problem it was initially intended to solve. Because I've heard allusions to the economic development opportunities down there, and all of a sudden, we're not talking about a traffic problem anymore. And that's, those are the reasons, I have my own reservations about it. But, but if it is to solve purportedly a traffic problem, then let's make sure the analysis that we do is directly tied to that traffic problem.
I look forward to your summary of the 714 pages.
That's all I've got.
Stay tuned, I'll say.
So you don't want to talk about this?
Yes, one other thing for me to bring up for discussion is, back to EMA, we do have in our office 12 ratified agreements.
Yes.
City of Medina, City of Brunswick, Granger, Harrisville, Hinckley, Liverpool, Medina, Mountville, Spencer, Wadsworth, Westfield, and York Townships. We have a few others that we've heard of that are, that have been ratified or approved by the boards, but haven't made its way back to us. I haven't heard about Guilford. I haven't heard about Guilford.
I think that they were going to be included with the village of Seville. I'm going down to Seville Monday and then Chatham on Tuesday.
And I also know, I do know that Westfield took action to approve it. Westfield, I'm sorry, Westfield Center, the village, took action to approve it, but they're just waiting on a signature to send it back from the attorney who handled that form, and I think a couple other villages, too, have it ready to return. So what we, I've put together that we've, I think I circulated to everybody, was a, a letter to just update the local government entities on the status of the ratification, kind of remind them to, to take some action, and then give them a little bit of a preview. This is a conversation that we had at a recent EMA committee meeting, but a preview of the process from here forward, which will culminate, once it's fully ratified, with a meeting, you know, later this year, potentially early next year, of the countywide advisory group, which is, has representatives from each of the, of the subdivisions that are involved.
Similar to the health departments and stuff.
Exactly. Right, right. And at that point, the, the executive committee roster will be finalized, at least up to the three seats that are appointed by the...
Statutory seven.
Right, right. Statutory seven, and then some of the additional ones.